David Menzies for Rebel News here in Whitby, Ontario. And guess what? It's another Durham District School Board meeting. And it's another meeting in which the parents, i.e. the parents, i.e. the taxpayers, have been banned by the control freaks and censorious thugs that comprise the Durham District School Board.
I was approved a question to ask. And then when I got here, I was told I was not allowed to ask it in person. They were changing the wording. And so I yelled out what the actual question was, and I was escorted out.
And get a look at this, folks. We were told about three hours ago from Stephanie Ailsworth. She's a communications person at the board that media was allowed. Well, there was a proviso, caveat. You can't bring your recording devices in, which is kind of a hindrance to us being a visual medium. But anyway, well, guess what? We just found out from security here that no, media is not allowed in. Now, I had an interaction with a security guard, nice guy named Brett. And he told us that the Director of Education herself has deemed media persona non grata. Here, check it out.
Okay, sir. I've got your answer for you.
Thank you.
And it is a definite no. That it is closed to all public and media. It is only for the board and trustees.
Who said that?
So I got that from... I can find out who actually said that.
I'd love to know because Stephanie said it's Brett, right?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay. Well, folks, we have a he said, she said coming on. Brett is saying that he's been told that the board meeting is closed to both parents and the media. But check out this recording from the media relations person, Stephanie. She says media is allowed to come in, although not with recording devices. But anyways, check it out.
Media are not banned, nor have they ever been banned from attending the meetings. There's media designated seating within the boardroom, and media are more than welcome to join.
Okay.
However, they cannot film in the boardroom nor bring filming equipment to the boardroom. They are free to spectate and live tweet, and a recording of the meeting will be made available online afterwards. So you're more than welcome to join. You just can't film live while the meeting's happening.
The Director of Education.
Yes.
Camille has said that it's a no for media and public to come in.
How did this change in just three hours' time? Because Stephanie Ailsworth said... Do you want to listen to the recording?
No, no, no. It's not I disbelieve you. So yeah, it's just frank, it came from the Director of Education that yeah, it's a closed meeting tonight. Media and public are not allowed in.
In any event, concerned parents, as you can see, are assembling in the parking lot. They're going to have a demonstration much like the one we saw last month. And I believe one parent has been granted permission to ask one question, but virtually, mind you, they don't want any of the filthy masses to walk into the Durham District School Board, the inner sanctum of these control freaks. I wonder what that question would be. My first question is, what would be the reason for banning parents? I mean, ostensibly, it's because there was violence at the May 15th boardroom, a board meeting, rather. But nobody I have spoken to has witnessed that. Secondly, what do these trustees feel about pornography in elementary schools in Durham District? We've covered those stories before. The list goes on, quite frankly. So we will talk to the parents, maybe ask them if you were allowed to ask a single question to the anointed ones behind these walls, what would it be? And hopefully, in the meantime, we can scrum some of these educrats and find out where they weigh in on, you know, banning, censoring, promoting porn in elementary schools, that sort of thing. Let's see what happens.
Hey, officers.
How are you doing?
Are you here to take away some parents asking insensitive questions?
We might be, yeah.
I have some medical work. There's gotta be other crying in Durham District, I guess. Real crying.
I'm watching, that's the risk.
How does it feel to be literally kicked to the curb from the school board meeting? They have banned parents for reasons that are beyond me.
Honestly, I'm devastated. Because the way they are painting us parents, it's not true. It's all a lie. If we say something that we believe in, we are haters or labeled with certain names, but we are not.
Literally kicking the parents to the curb. You're not allowed into their meeting. It's a publicly funded school board. Why is that?
That's what you just mentioned, that it's a publicly funded. So if it's publicly funded, then they should be considering what public is saying.
Yes.
So once they're not hearing out what we are trying to say, then this is what's gonna happen. And this is gonna grow. Eventually, it's gonna grow. It's just the beginning.
They're not even allowing you in a publicly funded building.
I think they're too woke now. They want to take all of our rights away, and they want to turn it into what they want us to be. I'd rather be my own person and go after my own values.
Okay, we'd like to ask, why are we not allowed to go inside and attend the meeting?
I think that's a great question.
What reason do they have for silencing us? What are they afraid of?
There's a Black History Police Cruiser here. Let's check that out. Hey, guys, do you know who the lady is on your police cruiser here? Do you know who the lady is on the police cruiser?
I could probably take a pretty good guess.
Okay.
That looks like Nelson Mandela.
Yes, Oyagham and Lincoln Alexander, right? Who's she?
Who would that be?
That's a good question. Do we have any other races being commemorated on Durham District Cruiser?
That'd be a good question for their communications.
You think if you were driving around with portraits of people on your police cruiser, you'd know who they are? What do I know? Just reading your sign, "Why does the DDSB fear parents' questions?" That is the question, isn't it? I mean, it's a publicly funded school board. You've literally been kicked to the curb. What is going on here?
I don't know. Obviously, there's an agenda. And the people that are supposed to be protecting our children aren't. And so parents and aunts and uncles and grandparents are standing up, and hopefully, our voice will be heard.
They say the ostensible policy reason is because of violence that's erupted at previous board meetings. I cannot find, and I've tried to get an eyewitness, to get any video indicating violence, or do these people consider impolite questions as an act of violence?
Or hugging. You know, it's ridiculous. It's ridiculous that, again, federations and trustees are willing to blatantly lie to further their agenda because there's been no violence. The worst there's been is the group shouting out, "Answer, answer, answer," because the board refuses to answer any questions, and that's as violent.
We're just asking board members if they actually witnessed any signs of violence back at the May 15th board meeting.
No.
Then why are parents being banned, ma'am?
I have no idea. Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out.
If that's what they said, that's what they believe, but that's not true.
Yeah.
The meeting was online. It's still on the YouTube. Everyone can watch it and judge it if there was really violence or not. It was clear, no violence. Yes, there were some disturbance because parents were angry, their questions were being good answered. So, but no one said hate words or things like this. I was surprised what I heard after this.
Unless they think that asking an insensitive question is an act of violence.
So we were there. Not one incident, not one incident happened. And we have been asking them, please show the proof. Nothing, silence.
Ma'am.
We gave proofs what happened to us and everything. Nothing.
So I guess we're not allowed to know what goes on behind closed doors at our children's schools?
Apparently, and that includes the media as well. And as you can see, they brought out the muscle.
Yeah, the Gestapo are here.
It's very convenient. The police station is right next door.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I've seen some disturbing things on social media today. A lot of these things that are going on in Canada, you know, the drag events and things like that, and they're invading our schools, and it needs to stop. There's no inclusion in this. There's no... It's not equity. It's you're choosing the smallest minority, and you're choosing to support only that.
It's despicable. And I look at the curriculum. I'm looking at this book called Identical. It's a novel about a father having an incestuous sexual relationship with his young daughter. You know, to me, I think that meets the benchmark of pornography.
It is pornography. In my children's school, I live in Oshawa, there's a book called Raising Alaska. It has some very explicit parts in it, and many parts of the books. It upsets me as a mother. My children are eight and nine and five, and they don't need to be exposed to that. They're children, they want to play. They don't care what people do in their bedrooms. I don't know who brought these books into our schools. They shouldn't be in our schools. We need to concentrate on educating our children and stop indoctrinating them.
Does it especially bother you that... I assume you have children in the school district, and you're a taxpayer, so you're paying their salaries? Does that make it even more galling that they shut you out, they kick you to the curb?
Of course, yeah. I feel sad. Parents are part of the education system, as well as teachers at schools. We all come together to educate our children. So we have to participate in this. We shouldn't be kicked out.
They're getting paid with the tax dollars?
Yeah.
But what's the outcome? Zero, absolutely zero. They don't want to hear.
They've gotten worse. And now is it Bill 98 that they're trying to take away our ability to elect trustees, and the trustees will just be appointed? So if it's bad now, it's going to get even worse.
When they want to be elected, they are there, and they don't tell anything until they get elected. Then the agenda comes out.
The commitment to properly and respectfully acknowledge and include two SLGBTQI identities has been shared by Minister Leche's recent memo to school boards with a message that the Ontario government sees them, values them, and are proud to stand with them.
I'm very sad that even, I would say, all the politicians too, when they won't vote, they are saying we are with parents, but where are they?
You know, you're so right. This is ostensibly a conservative government. They claim to be. They were, you know, dumping on the McGinty-Winn sex education curriculum. I would say under the Doug Ford, conservatives, things have gotten worse.
It is, it is. Because, to be honest, elementary school can take the exemption, but the high school cannot. They have to sit through it. Even if they come out and say that we don't feel comfortable, we are uncomfortable with the thing you're explaining, their answer is, you have to sit through it because it's mandatory. And when they say, but we are not feeling it, they're either... The students are afraid to speak because they know either they're gonna get penalty, or they won't pass with good grades, or the teachers will boycott them, or anything. The kids are gonna look at them a certain way. So they are afraid.
It's like intimidation tactics.
It is. And they are. I know that they are scared, but that's not right. If we... We're not trying to scare someone else, but you are scaring the other children too. They also matter.
Oh, hey, ma'am. Can you ask... I'd like to ask if you witnessed any violence at the October 15th board meeting? No? Do you support pornography in elementary schools? Just asking board employees if they actually witnessed any violence at the May 15th board meeting.
I'm just a student here.
Oh, you're a student?
Yeah.
Did you witness any violence on the May 15th board meeting from any of the parents?
I heard a lot. I did not see acts of violence.
Okay, then. And we heard transphobic and homophobic remarks? We don't have an example of that, of the stuff you heard.
I wasn't sitting close enough.
Oh, is that right? Okay, then. So why are the parents banned, ma'am, from a publicly funded school board?
I think you would need to talk to the chair about that.
Excuse me, ma'am. Just wondering, did you witness any violence at the May 15th board meeting? If not, why are parents banned, ma'am? Sir, if you were allowed in tonight and you could ask one question, what would it be?
Why are you taking all the rights away from the rest of the people? Like, everybody has rights, and they should be able to say what they are, and they should be able to vote from there.
Why don't you answer the questions? And it's a broad range of questions. It's about dress code. It's about... It's not just the gender issues. It's about why certain support groups are only available to certain groups of people and not to everybody. So there's a broad range of questions, and they don't want to answer any of them.
So why are the parents not being heard? You are taking our kids inside. We should be knowing what they're doing. Once you ask about the inclusivity, then you should include parents first of all. Rather than any other person, you should be including parents who should give their input about their own cultures as well, about their own ethnicity as well, about their own all stuff as well. So if they are not being heard, then this is all going to go waste. What they're trying to do is just trying to put a barrier to the other people's thought and pushing our kids to what they think only.
I would ask them why they insist on clearing our education.
Hmm. What do you mean by clearing our education exactly?
That's what they're planning to do. They want to add this LGBTQ into every subject, math, science, everything. It's so... They want to include that in everything, that it doesn't have to be included in because it doesn't have anything to do with that.
So it's indoctrination these days over education?
100%. It is indoctrination.
Why parents are not allowed to educate their kids? We are the first educators. We have a right to ask question, and we should be allowed to ask question what you're teaching our kids.
I would like to remind the presenter that presentation should only include the material that was submitted for approval, and there will be only one speaker for the presentation. We welcome tonight Navid Bahadur from Durham Parents United. Navid, once you have finished your presentation, trustees will be permitted to ask questions of clarification. Please go ahead when you're ready to read your approved presentation.
You may go ahead with your presentation.
I was just gonna say, you guys can see me.
Yes.
Thank you. If you've been representing your parents united, I was asked by members of the... Because unfortunately, the environment that we live in, many people are scared to speak on issues of concern, the welfare and safety of their children. So today, I actually feel sick to my stomach that I feel oppressed, actually. And I feel that all these parents here, all these parents here feel oppressed. Everybody here feels oppressed and silenced. And these... This is the diverse community of Durham that voted trustees in.
Excuse me, Mr. Bahadur?
Yes?
You were asked to bring forward the presentation that was approved for this evening.
Correct. My presentation topic was the silencing of parents and how that had a detrimental effect on their children and wanting to make the board of trustees aware of this. So how am I off topic? I'm gonna be confused. This is exactly what my presentation is on, silencing and the effects of that. I will continue.
Go ahead, sir.
This is the... For the trustees, for example, Christine Thatcher said, as your DDSB trustee, I'll be that needed link between you and the school board. We don't see you as being that needed link right here. Kelly Miller, I will engage the parents and community agents. Shaleen Pinello, I am an activist and advocate. My passion for anti-racism, my passions for anti-racism and anti-oppression. We are all oppressed. We are all silenced.
Am I an activist?
I feel oppressed. What danger do I pose that I can't come into the meeting to present? There should be some dignity offered to someone.
Thank you, Mr. Bahadur. Your presentation will be concluded, as this is a new presentation and not the one that has been approved. Thank you very much.
My presentation is on silencing.
Stop that.
This is what my presentation is on. So I have some more to say. Well, that's it. So the presentation they allowed me to present on was the silencing of the community, the silencing of parents. And they approved it to let them know the detrimental effect of that. And I wanted to show them all who they're silencing: kids, parents, community stakeholders. In this gathering out there, we actually have engineers, we have doctors and lawyers, we actually have a professor who teaches at a college. This is who they're oppressing. This is who they're silencing. I want them to be aware of that. They cannot do this to us.
What did they say to you, sir?
They just said to me, you're not on presentation, you're off topic. Everything I said was about how they're silencing us and the detrimental effects of that. This was pretty clear in my presentation and the email that they approved.
And they responded with silence, in other words.
They responded by saying, you're going off topic? I don't know. I don't know how else better to explain what silencing is than with a visual presentation like this. They have listened to outside third parties and made our... This group here has labeled us as bigots and hateful people. But this is not what we're here for. This is not who we are. We have sent them an email, Durham Parents United. Concerned parents have sent all the trustees on May 23rd and the Director of Education email on May 23rd, letting them know, asking them what proof was there. As you've talked to the heads of security, who said, as far as he knows, he's seen nothing of that sort. Outside of disruptions, he's seen nothing of that sort that constitutes hatred or homophobic acts or acts of terrorism. They're listening to outside parties where none of that is the reality. So I wanted to let them know that we sent them an email. This is not who they are. So if you want me to read my presentation here, I can, which was what it was supposed to be. I was supposed to talk about family values to them, how we feel silenced. We feel silenced when we're just concerned about something basic, which is family values, and I'll explain what that means. Every person, everybody who has children, regardless of your culture, socioeconomic upbringing, your status, every family has family values. Family values are what your culture is, what kind of music you listen to, what clothes you wear. Those are all part of your family values that you learn at home. The food you eat, if you pray, all those things fall under family values. We send our children to school. So we expose them, and the teachers let them know that other family values exist so that they don't become haters, so they do become tolerant. This is why we send our kids to school. For this reason, let them know that other family values exist and should be respected, and they should know what they are. We don't send our kids to school so that our kids are told... You could maybe... Maybe your family values could be different. That's not their job. That's the job of parents, especially kids at a young age. As an example, if I have a child... If I... If our family is atheist, doesn't believe in God, I want my child to go to school knowing that there's other families that exist that have other religious beliefs. Some kids believe in God, some maybe don't. I want them to know that. But I don't want my child to be told, you know what, little buddy? You can believe in God if you like. No, that's a parent's job. This is the slippery slope that they've crossed. When we bring up these simple concerns, then they say, oh, you're hating. You're being a bigot. For example, we might have a certain lifestyle that we want to talk to our kids about. Some people believe that the LGBTQ, whatever they believe in, it's not something that they're... That's their values. So I want to send my kids to school so they know, you know what? Some kids have two moms or two dads. And I want my kids, and we want our kids to know that, because this teaches them tolerance. But we don't want our kids to be told that, you know what, you could do this if you like to. That's not what we send our kids to school for. That is not tolerance anymore. That comes into now indoctrination. So whenever we bring these concerns up, they label us, and then we feel silenced. Even though we can speak, we're still silenced, because how many of you guys are afraid, or how many people are back home or all throughout the province are scared to speak up? Many people are afraid to speak up. They're worried they might lose their jobs. But this is not what it's about. Our constitution allows any individual the right to hold and live by their religious or creed beliefs in the best manner without fear of systemic marginalization. Peaceful coexistence does not necessitate agreement, acceptance, affirmation, promotion, or celebration. That's not what it is. You just have to know that other people exist, and you respect them for who they are. You don't have to join in their celebrations. You have schools that mandated pride-raising celebrations and ceremonies, and they've told these kids they have to come. Otherwise, they can't be exempted. But we know that's not true, because your Catholic just said they're not raising the flag. So if they're not raising the flag, yet principals in Durham region are telling kids to attend pride-raising celebrations, otherwise you're violating perhaps the human rights of others. Who's right and who's wrong?
There's some values that are expressed within the context of the flag in that community that don't align with our faith.
Your Catholic has lawyers that told them, yes, you could vote and not raise the flag. That's fine. That's your choice. We know that principals should not be telling kids, you have to attend such things. There has to be a need for an accommodation. Accommodations exist all the time. But they're saying that, no, kids can't ask for accommodation. DDSB has a creed accommodation form that you can fill out and that we're gonna share with people. It's like mandated by law to the most... Like, to that extent. The problem is DDSB, you always hear them telling parents, it's because of human rights, you have to do this. You have to do this. We have to celebrate this community, otherwise it's human rights. Now gets us to another point. The reality is, did any of you guys even know that June is also Canadian Indigenous Heritage Month? Hands up if you knew that. Hands up. Two, three, four, six, less than half. I found out a couple days ago. Why is it that no one knows, or very few people know, or the newsletters at school don't even mention that June is Canadian Indigenous Heritage Month? The DDSB in 2019, I looked at their Twitter account. They only announced it in 2019, in June, under like the 21st, when it was actually a certain day that they had to recognize with respect to Indigenous heritage. They didn't do anything throughout the rest of the month. So this is the double standards we talk about. They want to be inclusive to all these other parties and groups, right? But what's the reality? And that's when the meeting got cut off last time, when I was just asking simple questions.
We're going to call basically another recess. Thank you very much, and thank you for the questions. Excuse me. I will call again this meeting to order. What we're going to do is, we're gonna continue on, but as far as public question period is concerned, we will have those questions with the answers posted, like we have done in the past.
We see groups being celebrated differently, right? That's what they talked about. You know, they celebrate diversity through multiple means. The fact is, the LGTB community gets celebrated with a sidewalk, right? A flag up there. School emblems get changed to include it. Workshops, guest speakers, pride celebrations, pride rallies, pride clubs, guest speakers and assemblies. Okay. The LGTB community is discriminated against, and they need to get... They need to have protections, and we need to be aware of the discrimination and the suffering that they go through. Absolutely. But we have a Black community. We have an Indigenous community that's also suffering, probably more. I'm not trying to say one's worse, but probably, we know they've been suffering for much longer. We know that for. And the stats show that they're facing much more discrimination than other communities. Indigenous women are disproportionately more victims of violent crimes than any other group. Yet they're only celebrated throughout the year twice on specific days. Why do those groups, and the Black community, or the Jewish community, or the Muslim community, or other communities that are facing systemic discrimination, racism, oppression, why do those groups get bits of this type of celebration or types of this? Little bit of this and a little bit of that. They don't get this, what we call the platinum package. The platinum package is what we see here, like they talk about the sidewalks and the flags and everything else. If one group only gets this, and every other group gets a little bit of the rest, there's something unfair about that, especially when those groups are facing a lot of discrimination too. When we raise those concerns, they say you're coming from a place of hate. We're not coming from a place of hate. I want... I want our kids to know about the Indigenous suffering and the Black community, how they're suffering in other communities. If you're gonna give a flag for one, you gotta give it for others, or you don't give it for any. They're gonna say, you know what, we celebrate diversity in other cases, in other ways. I, last year, asked Quincy James, System Lead, he works at Jim Markovsy, the... One of the main Directors of Education, Assistant Director. I said quite simply, next... I said quite simply, next, this year, I asked him last year, I wanna see in my child's school some recognition of flag for black history and Islamic heritage, because my family identifies with that. He called me back and said, no, we're not gonna do it. That's discrimination. So they can have their answer when they say we celebrate communities in different ways. But if we make this request, and we say we want a flag too, and they say no, how else are we gonna look at that outside of it being discrimination? And that's the problem.
And sir, one last question. It doesn't look like they gave an answer to your question. They met your question about silence with more silence. These board members aren't concerned with these concerned parents and grandparents. The question is, where do you go from here?
So within the last two weeks, this movement, Durham Parents United, which is a diverse movement, it's not tied to any faith-based, religious-based. It's just concerned parents. We've started other groups, other groups have been formed. Toronto Parents United, London Parents United. All over Ontario, we wanna have groups like this, which is not tied into specific faith, just concerned parents. And parents all over the province are getting concerned. And really, when it comes to election time, that's when you have to demand a change. These people that ran on this platform to speak for the people, they're not doing it. And this is the proof. We have their Twitter. Deb Olfield, I just found out that she posted, so she posted some video of people, you know, talking about her last meeting, where they're accusing us of being bigots. So she's posting that, saying that I'm a bigot. I'm not a bigot.
But we know that that's not your goal. We know that your goal is to eliminate pride at schools.
Like, and we're not bigots, and whoever's asking these questions. For example, on May 15th, parents brought valid questions on topics such as dress code policies, police check for in-school guests and presenters, recent hate incidents against the black community, and flag raising concerns. We brought these legitimate questions. Very vague answers they gave, and then we get frustrated. We understand that there was a disruption. Other boards have had disruptions too. But they came back to their meetings, and they keep telling us we can't come back to the meetings. Their job is to pick out the people that do these things. If someone just crosses the line or does anything of hate, and take them away. But they're not doing that. They're taking, they're just making all of us not be able to participate.
This board needs to stop teaching hate. They are teaching false gender ideologies that's causing an epidemic of hate.
Okay, I am going to, I have cut you off because this is longer than the question that you had submitted to be provided. This is.
What we also need to do is we need to teach all parents